Tuesday, June the 20th, 2023. Could we get a roll call, please?
Counselor Long.
Here.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Hires.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. A public notice of meeting was provided December 6, 2022, at 4:45 PM to the Secretary of State of Oklahoma, and an additional notice was provided at June 15, 2023, at 11:08 AM at a 111 Cherokee Avenue, Talacqua, Oklahoma. I don't know that I had to read that, but I did. Okay, well, I'll save my voice. All right, we'll move right into consent. I need the consent agenda. I need to make one clarification. There's a Scrivener's error on letter H. It should be 2022 instead of 2023. Say that again. Item H. Got it?
H is August 11, 2022?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Regarding the consent agenda, do I have a motion?
I'd like to remove Jay. Please.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, C, please.
C? Anything else? I feel like I woke up in a new world, guys. This seems a little bit foreign to me today.
Take a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second?
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Long.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And we're gonna go back to item number C.
Am I asked that we tabled this at this time?
Any objection? How about item?
I'm sorry, you're correct. I want to take no action. I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you, Stephen. I found out too. I'm sorry.
I like the teamwork.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Stephen.
Item J?
Yeah, I just would like, um, um, and I assume that this would be Ray. Could you tell us exactly what's gonna happen down there?
Well, I'll get as close to exactly as I can. Uh, the Playhouse Theater, as we have looked before, uh, we're talking about public parking. We're gonna have a huge influx of need for parking downtown. Uh, spoken with the street commissioner and the Parks and Rec Supervisor or Department Head, and what we're gonna do is clean the parking lot up, make it useful for parking. Uh, measurements come out. I believe Mr. Smith told me 105 parking spots right now at this point would be available. Uh, he's gonna kill the weeds, clean it up, stripe it. Uh, Parks is gonna come up there in the little center islands and plant some, uh, uh, nice little shrubberies that can withstand drought a little easier uh, and make it available until further, and that way we don't have a lot of invested in it, minimal money invested in it, and it does provide parking for downtown and kinda clean up around where it's, so we don't have some things sticking up or whatever, so.
Do you have an estimate for like a max that we're gonna spend? Like, what's our max that we?
The max we're gonna spend is probably gonna be the paint. Yeah, probably, I would say probably under $1,500 total.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other motion on that item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Long.
Yeah.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you all. Item number five, approve, approve with modification or deny ordinance 1357-2023. An ordinance amending section 5-103.1 Building Code, Construction Documents, Permit of Applications of the City of Talacqua Code of Ordinances and Declaring an Emergency. For this, we have interim city administrator Hammond, building inspector Richard Cawfran, and planning and development director Taylor Tannehill.
I'd be glad to take that one. I've spoke with Taylor and Richard and the fire marshal, uh, fire marshal and, uh, city inspector worked on this, uh, pretty hard. What we come into was a kind of a conflict on one of the codes for remodel. Uh, it can be interpreted one way or the other. The square footage was calling for an engineer, uh, under any remodel of any, uh, type commercial building. Uh, we put a square footage on that, uh, because it, some of it just didn't warrant hiring it. You know, somebody spending $15,000, $20,000 for an engineer to come in and do an architectural drawing or rendering of what they were gonna do, uh, because the work was minimal. So, we put a square footage on it. Uh, I think we, uh, we landed on 4,000 square feet. Uh, anything above that would have to have an architect's stamp plans for that. So, that is a, an adjustment to the code to make it more workable and usable. Uh, it was a unanimous decision by the fire marshal, the building inspector, uh, Mr. Tannehill and myself.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Long.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Move on to item number seven. Approve, approve with. Approve or deny declaring ordinance number 1357-2023 an emergency?
Is there circumstances that would?
This would put it in immediate effect. We have several projects in town that this would affect, and if we put it in emergency, it would save them from basically having to wait 30 days to try to move forward, and, uh, so I recommend it's a do pass.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Long.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now, we'll go to number seven. Approve, approve with modifications or deny ordinance number 1358-2023. An ordinance amending city code part seven, finance and taxation. Chapter one, finance, finance and budget administration by amending section 7-105. Purchases, bidding and quantitation requirements by amending section 7-108. Purchase of goods, services and capital by adding section 7-901. Definitions, section 7-902. Authority to make purchases, section 7-904. Contract negotiation, section 7-905. Emergency purchases, providing for codification, severability, repealer, and declaring an emergency. Once again, Mr. Hammond and, uh, city attorney Tyler Hammond.
You go ahead.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, this ordinance is a, a reform of the city's purchasing code. The current code has not been amended in quite some time, and in some places is contradictory and frankly unclear. The purpose of this ordinance is to clarify to city department heads their purchasing authority. By way of quick summary, uh, the competitive bidding requirement will be raised from the current $25,000 threshold to $50,000 threshold, which does match state standards. For purchases less than $50,000, if the purchase is $5,000 or less, the city departments can go ahead and just make that purchase. For 5,000 to 10,000, it'll be made up with the approval of the city administrator, and then from 10,000 to 50,000 will be made upon the approval of the city manager after obtaining three quotes. All purchases over 50,000 must be done by competitive bid with the following exceptions. Competitive bid will not be required if, it can only be in examples of, if it is a sole source contract such that only one provider is able to meet the requirement. The supplies are off a state, are off a state bidding list such as the bidding list maintained by state central services in Oklahoma City or in event of an emergency. For those that do require public competitive bidding, bids will must be placed in the newspaper and given at least 21 days for interested bidders to respond. In the case of emergency purchases, city departments may make emergency purchases necessary to ensure that the government continues to function, and all emergency purchases must be reported to city council at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Be happy to answer any questions. I think this is necessary. Over the last several weeks, I've gotten several requests from department heads seeking clarification on their purchasing authority, whether that includes contracts, contractual services, does that include materials? Uh, so certainly, department heads are looking for direction and guidance. Uh, happy to answer any questions. I will make one note for the record for all those who are listening. Uh, the ordinance does make clear that any city official that engages in the practice of, uh, purchase order splitting, which is the purpose, uh, which is essentially paying an invoice on two separate purchase orders with the, for the purposes of avoiding the competitive bidding rules, will be terminated and prosecution will be sought. Happy to answer any questions.
Seven.
I believe it actually exempt asphalt and fuel.
Under the present purpose, it would be exempt if it's less than $50,000.
Yeah, it's currently exempt. I may want to need to look at that.
You can certainly add it back in, make that purchases of fuel and asphalt can be exempt.
Because of that, we have no control over that, so. I think the sole source would be kinda covered on that.
That might be the sole.
Just the amount.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Didn't even recognize you. Hello?
Hi.
Just asking for clarification. I looked for the exact language online to see if I could answer my question, and I wasn't able to, so I'm here to ask. Um, just from what you just read, so anything up to 50,000 will not come to council? Correct. Bids continue to come past that point?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and, um, got my last question, sorry.
And I do need to amend that previous statement. The only instance where they would come before council, if it's below that $50,000 threshold, if the department head has exceeded their, uh, budget allocation. So, for example, there's only five thou, there's only $5 in the, in the budget line item for that item. This costs $6. That item will be on hold till it's brought, until a budget amendment is brought before council to authorize additional spending.
Okay, so city administrator has full authorization to spend up to $50,000 with the proper documentation.
That's correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Question?
Can you recommend this?
Yes, I think it will provide some clarification to department heads as to have their ability to spend the city's money in the manner required by law.
Okay.
And I just wanted to make sure, um, from what Mr. Smith said, are we, is this right what we need to do to purchase out asphalt? Are we good the way it's written?
I would recommend, given the, the comment, if we're interested in continuing to exempt asphalt to include, to remove, to include that back in, and I can make that change.
Okay.
And gasoline.
Yeah, fuel, fuel, gasoline. The previous code read fuel, asphalt, gravel and concrete.
And this is not gonna be retroactive. This is gonna be.
This, this will all be affected from this moment on, if you, if council so approves.
So, can we approve the modification now or do we?
We can approve it now with modification.
Okay. So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Is there any?
No, well, no noise.
I heard a noise. Is the voices in your?
I don't hear anything.
Making sure I'm not like.
Like a whippoorwill on inside the rear.
John, John Todd, what? To Mr. Hammond, sorry. You, this Mr. Hammond, on his motion where he said, motion with modifications, does he need to clarify his modifications?
Was the mod, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve as amended, as stated by.
Fuel, asphalt, gravel and concrete.
Yes.
Yeah, fuel being. Oh, purchases mainly, it would be for airport, uh, for when we do bulk purchases out there. Uh, the only other thing we buy bulk is, is about 250 gallons at a time, so I can't think of anything else. Right. The only bulk we buy now is, is, is airport fuel, and we have no control of the price when we buy it. Just has to be bought. And it should be a recouper.
Any other, is there, and we had a second?
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Long. Motion carried.
Thank you. Approve or deny declaring ordinance number 1358-2023 an emergency?
Reasoning being that we need this as an emergency, or is this?
He's trying to finish.
That, uh, I don't have, uh, per se, an emergency, uh, if it can be done and done properly. Uh, I'm good with it. Uh, if not, then don't mind waiting 30 days to do it, but it, it would, again, Kevin Smith's getting ready to purchase some asphalt, so to try to get done before school starts. Either way, he's good with that.
You know, so.
See what he's saying?
There's no.
There's no need for an emergency. Thank you.
Mayor, mayor, members of council, uh, should you choose not to make this an emergency, we'll have to bring this back at the next city council meeting to find, which is not a problem. It's just, the charter requires that ordinance, non, ordinances that are not an emergency must be read a second time.
And that won't affect anything.
Left, Mr. Hammond, what is your recommendation? You're left. John Tyler, you're left, he's right.
You can say young and old, I will not be offended.
I'm not gonna say that. I'm gonna say left and right.
Whether, whether it's purely a policy question, we're trying to just give the department heads clarification. Certainly by your vote in the previous action, you, you've indicated to department heads that this is the direction we're going. Wait 30 days or not, it, it's up to you all. It really be, uh, 15 days, uh, plus 30.
Or we can just clean it up right now.
Either, either way.
It can be done and out of our way right now, or you can wait 15 days and do it.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve that as an emergency.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
No.
Counselor Long.
There's no emergency.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Counselor Long.
Because I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, I'll, I'll go with yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Number nine. It says, to approve, approve with modification or deny resolution number 06-20-2023. A resolution relating to the incurring of indebtedness by the trustees of the Talacqua Regional Development Authority relating to the economic development agreement between the Talacqua Regional Development Authority and Op, Op, what? Opti LLC DBA Prevalis. I knew that word.
Okay, sure.
Counselors, thank you for putting this on the agenda. We've been working on this, uh, this line item for about nine, 10 months now. Um, we have a, an agreement with Prevalis we think is extremely beneficial to the city of Talacqua. Um, I checked today, they've already got 170 employees in our community since last October, 120 more within the next 120 days. Over 300 jobs potentially, um, up to 400 by the time they're all, I mean, they're, they're growing so fast at this point that, um, potential to keep on growing. Um, they've got good, solid business. Opti me is headquartered out of Atlanta. That's the parent company. Prevalis is headquartered in a small town of Bruton, Alabama. Um, they love small towns like this, and we're actually the largest community that they're in. And so, um, we have provided their workforce needs exponentially, and so they have a lot of contracts that are willing and ready to come into Talacqua. This helps, um, TRDA, this is actually how we beat out other communities. They had six communities in Oklahoma that they were looking at. This is, um, the agreement that helped us beat out these other communities, how we landed this, this company, these jobs and all of the, the payroll that comes along with it. A lot of economic, um, potential with this agreement. We, um, the TRDA board voted to approve it last week after we made some changes. Um, Prevalis then signed it and agreed to it, sent it back same day, so we have it on the agenda for y'all to agree to because we are going to be incurring debt um, to make this happen, so it, it has to come for approval for that. I'm here to answer any questions, anything that you've got on this one, and I'll be happy to be here.
I guess I'm a little confused because I got some text messages today. I heard that there was a $1.5 million loan that has already closed. Is that correct, or is that hearsay?
No, we, we have done the process, but it, it's, no loan has been, no money's been taken out against the loan.
Okay, okay, cuz I.
Right now, we are operating on cash reserves because we can't, until the city approves our indebtedness.
Okay, but you're working with local bank to do that, correct?
Yes, they won the bid process.
Okay, okay, because we're, okay, because I read the agreement. We're giving them some significant incentives, or technically, TRDA is giving them, giving the agreement that I read.
Yes.
But there's still another agreement forthcoming, right?
There will be a lease in place with Prevalis, but this is the agreement that, um, solidifies all of the incentive options.
Okay. Go for a second.
Questions, sorry. Questions? To the microphone, please.
She knows that. I know, I know.
Again, there was nothing online, so I couldn't confirm. Is this a different agreement than the one that was signed off October 14, 2022?
Yes, I believe, sorry.
This one, this one has been amended. Um, they grew faster than they had anticipated, and so we had to change one of the addresses for a site. And so, it, it is amended from the one that was agreed on October 14, yes.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes?
In the packet that came through, they can add the Talacqua Region Development Revenue 23 and 24. And, uh, I was thinking through it, and it looks like it's budgeted for a negative.
Yes.
Can you justify that?
Yeah, we've, uh, we've been budgeted for a negative the last several years. Um, we have cash reserves from some sale of land and, um, the Business and Tech Park, so we've been operating at a negative while we work on reoccurring revenue sources.
And you have for how many years?
Ever.
I'm sorry, say that part again, I didn't understand.
So, they have been, that TRDA has been operating at a negative or ever?
Oh, I thought you were talking about.
They don't have a recurring revenue source, which has an issue.
That's what, recurring revenue is one of the main things I'm working on right now, trying to figure out reoccurring revenue source that brings in other than rent at property.
Okay.
For this current, not with the incentives that we have for the next fiscal year, no. Unless we had a, another revenue stream come in, then we could, yes. I will, to answer your point, we, we do have the cash reserve, plenty of cash reserves to cover many years of, uh, negatives like that from sale of land, uh, specifically, um, Woodmark Site, whenever that, um, exchange happened. Yeah. So, even with a negative for a couple of years, we will still be fine and, and operating, um, with our regular operating expenses plus all the incentives that is included in the package.
Now, can you remind me again, are you guys required to bring that audit before us and present it at some point in time? I can't remember.
Yeah, every year, our audit comes before you guys, yes.
Okay, so when was your last audit completed?
Uh, we complete one every year.
I, I mean, when was your audit period? When, when was your audit period ending, or your fiscal year end, and when is your audit due?
July to June every year.
Okay, okay.
I, I don't remember the exact meeting it came, but it came, uh, Jackie Taylor here in town completed it, um, and it was sent over after we finalized everything. I don't know the exact meeting you guys approved it. I'm sure it was in consent agenda and, um, it was a clean report, so.
Okay, yeah, that would have been hopefully what? It would have been due what, last December, Marty?
That's my guess. I think we voted on it in November at TRDA, so I'm guessing it would have been sometime in December that you guys approved it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hires. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Long.
No.
Thank you. Item number 10, discussion of possible action to approve, approve with modification or deny supplemental agreement for inspection services provided by Lochner Engineering. Mr. Lambert?
Yes, as you know, this is a reference to the project we've had ongoing at the airport for the asphalt. Lochner bid this originally to the city. They're, I don't know, just explained, Lochner is, we work with them on a five-year, or an engineering firm on a five-year agreement. So, they put all this together for the FAA. This was set up as an 80-day project. They bid with the city for 80 days of inspection. We're at 260-some days now over, so they've still been providing inspections and things as the contractor drug out. So, I don't have the paper in front of me that y'all have, but I think we're like at 144,000, that they're behind. They should have brought this up earlier, but we're here now, so we keep solving any sooner than, than now.
195,000.
Does it not dig seen? I think that might be the older, cuz what we agreed to do, cuz they put the 195 figuring where we might end up. I think their actual due now is 145, 140-something. And we're not, they're not looking to bill us for that now. They're just needing us to agree to the, uh, amendment so that when everything parses out with the bonding company that they're, what they're owed is accounted for to them, cuz they don't have an agreement with the contractor. They've got an agreement with the city. So, way this will play out, if you agree to it, that'll, it'll be signed as the supplemental amount for whatever number that ends up. I'm pretty sure it's gonna be the 145, not the 195. And then that'll be on hold until the bonding company works through everything, and what will probably happen is the last billing, the city will pay Lochner that portion and not the contract.
I have kind of question, it says to clarification, 50,000, is that going to be paramount?
Well, do we have to do, Whitney, did we get a different?
I'm seeing 145, or you're saying 145, I'm seeing 195. I'm just, is there, do we need to, is that a clerical error, or is that a?
I, I believe it says that the approval of this supplemental agreement will not exceed 195. He is telling us that it is, uh, he believes it to be 144. But what I don't wanna do is interfere with the bonding company now that they've had to take over. Is that going to be an issue with this?
Issue. This is just Lochner's agreements with the city.
Okay.
So, they've spent this much time to where it's owed. So, if the agreement's in effect, once the bonding company goes through everything, it'll be showed up as that. I'm looking through my emails.
So, just to be clear, this isn't 145 more to the project. This is 145.
145 more. Yes, 145 more.
Where's it gonna come from?
So, it'll come out of the bonding. If everything works right, it'll come out of the bonding. If that doesn't work, we'll have to discuss with Lochner when we get to that point. I don't know what else.
So, just, so why are we spending another 145,000? Where did we go wrong?
When they bid it as an 80-day project, they, they had funds in it for 80 days, and I believe that was 130-some thousand. That's coming off the top of my head, if that could be right or not, for their services. At the end of that 80 days, we should have started, they should. At the end of that eighty days, we should have started, they should have started talking to us then about getting where they are. But they've got to this point to where they've extended to two hundred and sixty-some days.
Yeah.
When was the, when was the eighty days up?
I'd have to look from.
In the fall? What'd you say, we're at two forty-four now? You said we're at two forty-four.
Two sixty something.
Well, the founding source on this is to me incorrect because there is that has not happened yet, so that's where.
I would recommend taking no action on this until we set up a time where we can visit with Lochner and get a detailed description as to what needs to be done and where we're at. Uh, before we do that, I, I believe there may be some possible interference with the bonding. And, and not, not to question you, but I just think for them to tell us, they are the engineers and uh, they have been communicating with us. So let's find out if it is in fact another hundred and forty-four on top of a hundred and thirty before we do it. That's what my recommendation is.
Put that in. And that would just be no action.
Okay, so taking no action.
Unless someone would like to take action.
I'd like to make a motion that we take no action on that item. Just have to be quiet. So I'm telling you what's in my brain right now, quiet.
Are you having, you have the seizure?
I hear the noise. TV screen.
Thank you. Is that sound?
Brian.
What?
Right, number eleven, propose, proposed executive session. Need a motion to exit regular session and enter into executive session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Long.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Baker. Motion carried.
Veen into regular session, it's eight oh one. Number thirteen, discussion of possible action pertaining to District of Cherokee County Court Case Number CB twenty-three dash ninety-eight regarding an application to vacate utility reserves on Park Hill Road.
Eighty-nine of the district court of Cherokee County, where the city attorney did provide confidential communication to the city council. Uh, following that confidential communication, I believe an appropriate motion would be to authorize the city attorney to file appropriate paperwork as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Vote please. Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Long.
Yeah.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item fourteen, discussion and possible action related to purchase and or appraisal of real property for right-of-way purposes for the Park Hill Road project, authorizing the mayor or her designee to make offers, negotiate and make final payments.
Uh, mayor, members of the council, the council did meet an executive session to discuss the purchase and or appraisal of real property associated with Park Hill Road project. At this time, I believe an appropriate motion would be to authorize the mayor or her designee to make offers, negotiate, make final payments relating to the acquisition of right-of-way.
So moved. Second.
Did you repeat that? I'm sorry, I'm joking, he just went so fast. I was waiting on somebody to start bidding.
Mr. Oakley.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Baker. Counselor Long.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you so much. And item fifteen, discussion and possible action related to the employment of a city administrator.
Mayor, members of the council, the council did meet an executive session to discuss the employment of a city administrator. Following full discussion, I believe at this time, appropriate motion would be to authorize the city attorney to negotiate a contract with the city administrator and authorize the mayor to execute the same as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Long, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, call for adjournment. So moved. We're not in, not at this time.
We're in negotiations.
Yes. Okay, we're first and a second. We'll be done.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.